Good. All right, it is now six P M on Monday, March twentieth. No, it's not Monday, March twenty, wrong.
Wednesday, March twentieth.
Yes, Wednesday, March twentieth. Thank you. Uh, twenty twenty four. I call the Lexington Select Board to order. This meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format via the application Zoom, allowing remote public participation. Members of the public can view and participate in the meeting from their device by clicking on the link provided in the meeting agenda. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. Further, this evening's meeting is being broadcast live and archived by Lex Media for future on-demand viewing. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available on the town's website unless otherwise noticed. Um, in, members of the board are in person tonight. I'm Joe Pato, the board chair. Sitting on my right is Vice Chair Susie Barry, and on her right is Jill Hay. Sitting on my left is Doug Lucenti, and on his left is Mark Sandin. Joining us from staff are Jim Malloy, Town Manager, Kelly Axtell, Deputy Town Manager. Also joining us remotely is Kim Katzenbach, the Select Board Executive Clerk. Tonight's meeting is a regular session of the board, and we will be taking down public comments. Before we start this comment section of our meeting, I would like to remind all participants that we are we are neighbors and are working in the best interests of our community. I ask that all comments be made with civility and respect and without casting aspersions or reference to motives. Open public comments are for items not otherwise covered on our agenda. Comments are allowed for up to ten minutes. Each speaker is limited to two. Members of the board will neither comment nor respond other than to ask clarifying questions. Remote attendees who have dialed in by telephone should press star nine. To be recognized or click on the raise hand button in the Zoom application. When you are recognized to speak, please state your name, address, and any relevant board or committee affiliation. Tonight I'll be using a Zoom timer feature. It's a two-minute time. Got a countdown clock, and when it reaches zero, I will interrupt and allow the speaker only to finish their sentence. Is there anyone who wishes to make a comment about an item not covered elsewhere on tonight's agenda? Seeing no one in the room or online. Colleagues, we have no written comments in our packet, but we do have the Correspondent Secretary's Report for your review. Due to time constraints, I will postpone verbal announcements to the end of our meeting tonight. And Ms. Malloy, I'm going to postpone the Town Manager's Report to the end as well. That brings us to the consent agenda. Tonight we have four items. First, to approve Select Board Committee resignation on the Lexington Human Rights Committee. Second, for an application for a one-day liquor license for T E Bronx LLC doing business as the Galleray House seventeen twenty Massachusetts Avenue for first Friday receptions. Third is an application for one-day liquor license for the Lexington Council of Arts at the Community Center thirty-nine Merritt Road. And the fourth is to confirm the fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five Select Board goals. Colleagues, are there any items you wish to consider individually? Seeing none, I move the consent agenda items as submitted in the agenda packet.
Second.
Moved the seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. None, it is unanimous five to zero. Our first item for individual consideration is a, a hearing for a liquor license amendment alteration of license premises for A B N's LLC doing business as the Inn at Hastings Park. I open this hearing at six oh four P M. The Select Board Office has received the necessary paperwork from A B N's LLC doing business as the Inn at Hastings Park, Artistry on the Green, two twenty thirteen to twenty twenty seven Massachusetts Avenue, requesting an alteration of premises to include the rear outdoor dining area on their all-alcohol inholder liquor license. The Board has also been asked to review the proposed update to the liquor license conditions, and it is in the Board's packet. The Building and Health Departments have no objections to the application and indicated the applicant does need to update their permits with those respective departments to include this rear outdoor dining area. In the packet, there is additional information that includes the Board's, uh, uh, the motion at special town meeting that changed zoning, the Planning Board's twenty twenty-four, January twenty-four decision approving the request to amend zoning with conditions, and the, uh, recently approved memo of understanding between A B Holdings LLC and the town of Lexington, Massachusetts. In addition, the Board has received letters from several abutters to the property expressing their opposition to modifying the conditions of the license. Some of those abutters may be present tonight to speak. At this point, I'll open the hearing for any public comment. Uh, if you would like to make comment and you're in the room, please approach the microphone. And if you are online, please raise your hand in Zoom. All right, I will recognize the individual in the room, and you'll have two minutes.
Sure. Hi, my name is Christopher Dunham.
There's a button on it.
Yeah, she can't hear you.
Hi, my name is Christopher Dunham. I live at two thousand six Massachusetts Avenue. I have three, I think, pretty quick things that I'd like to say in regards to this motion. Um, I've reviewed the proposed license conditions that the Board submitted, and I'd like to thank you for what looks to me like excellent and fantastic, frankly, consideration of the issue. Um, I think the accommodation that's been made strikes the perfect balance between the Inn and the neighborhood by basically updating it for the pandemic exception that I think everyone in town appreciated from twenty twenty to, to, to date, uh, to include the, the, the rear area. One area of concern I'd like to note is that since February, until I think just earlier this week, the Inn had been advertising substantially greater, uh, outdoor service than those modified conditions indicate. On the front porch, they were saying for sixteen people for dining, and I think it was thirty-five for a cocktail reception on the front porch. And in the back patio, they said not just twenty-four seated for service, but I believe it was forty for a cocktail reception. And, and that obviously is, has not been approved and would be a significant expansion that it doesn't, to me, look like the Board has considered. So thank you for that consideration. The last thing I would like to note is that the neighborhood is, is, is very happy to engage with the Inn on this issue. I, I have not received personal outreach from them on expansion of operations and services and would just like to, to note that for the record, because it does carry a certain amount of anxiety for me to have to follow this issue from last fall when I spoke, uh, when it was first beat, this rezoning was presented and until frankly, this week, I've checked your, your website weekly to ensure that I'm not missing materials and caught this in time, received the abutters notice, but I, I, I opened a dialogue, because I know I've got about a dozen active members of the Parker Street neighborhood interested in this issue. Thank you for the time tonight.
Thank you. And recognizing the second person in the room, I'll give you a second so I get to the clock again. All right, you may begin.
Dawn McKenna, nine Hancock Street, precinct six, town meeting member. I am not going to say a lot, because I've spoken a lot on this topic in the past, but I, I just want to reiterate that this, um, is one of the most responsible business owners that we have, who's been very supportive of being, um, cognizant of the neighborhood. And I think there is no reason to do anything but allow them to continue to operate. And we are lucky that they were able to survive the pandemic, and we want to encourage them to grow as business is now picking up. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. McKenna. And there is no one else in the room. And checking online, I see no line, no hands up via Zoom. I'll give a few more seconds, and then I'll turn to the Board to see if there are any questions or comments. Right, colleagues, are there any questions or comments on the, the proposal? Uh, Mr. Sandin.
Um, I was just wondering if Ms. Keely might want to address the web page comment that was made by the, in, in the, by one of the members who spoke just a minute ago.
Ms. Keely, would you like to respond?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Sandin and Mr. Pato. Um, I also would like to thank Mr. Dunham for coming to the meeting this evening, and I apologize. Um, we have a new website, and there was a mistake on the website. And if you go and look at it now, all of the, the numbers have been updated and match, so I apologize for that mistake.
Thank you. So colleagues, any other questions or comments? All right, I, I do want to note that, uh, uh, both the zoning change uh, and our colleagues in the Department of Health and Building Department have cited the need for, for those permits to be renewed with the appropriate, uh, extensions for the locations. So the, the, I actually wrote a little more into the motion to capture that in our motion. Are there, are we all comfortable proceeding? In which case I'll close the hearing and move to the motion. Right, I close this hearing at six eleven P M. Uh, and I move to approve the A B Insurance, A B N's LLC doing business as the Inn at Hastings Park, Artistry on the Green, two thousand thirteen to twenty twenty-seven Massachusetts Avenue, alteration of premise application to include the rear outdoor dining area on their all-alcohol inholder liquor license, and approve the updated liquor license conditions dated March twentieth, twenty twenty-four, and further issue an updated license with conditions once the applicant, application is also approved by the A B C C, all subject to the issuance of updated building and health department permits reflecting the additional outdoor dining area.
Second.
Then moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. None, it is unanimous five to zero. Thank you. Thank you all for attending, and thank you, and best wishes for continued success in the Inn. Brings us to our second item tonight, which is annual town meeting. Uh, we are largely in place, but I understand some members have adjustments to their positions. So let's, uh, let me ask, who has an adjustment they would like to make? Ms. Hay.
Um, thank you for your patience. Um, I am now a yes on Article twenty-five, the Pine Meadows Clubhouse renovation, having had a chance to do my due diligence.
Thank you, Ms. Hay. I too am a yes on that question, Article twenty-five. Uh, sad at what the cost is, but, uh, nonetheless, supporting it.
And I have also, uh, been able to get some answers to some of my questions and think this is a good project and ready and willing to support it.
Very good, so that's five yeses.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Lucenti, I think he said you have something.
Um, Article thirty-eight, which I know will be coming up tonight. There was some concerns expressed that I hadn't fully thought, thought through at a recent E D A C meeting about sort of the contradictory nature of what we're asking to alter. And just for everyone's knowledge, Article thirty-eight is a men regulation of fossil fuel infrastructure bylaw to meet the D O E R's requested changes. So the, the, the concerns, which I think are legitimate, are that we would be changing the rules to say ban interior cooking of gas and fireplaces. But at the same time, we will still allow exterior hookups for gas or cooking. So if we're trying to reduce the number of gas hookups, seems like we would either say there aren't, there are no gas hookups, or you can allow both. So there, there was a lot of, um, I'd say confusion at the approach to us doing this. So, um, I'm, I'm not sure I, um, and I, I think one part of it is fine, you know, the, the, um, other part that's not related to the cooktop um, part, but I, I do think it is ironic for us to say where you can cook outside, but you can't cook inside. Who, who's that trying to benefit? Um, if we're trying to, again, reduce greenhouse gas emissions and, and frankly, reduce the number of gas hookups, I think it goes counter to that. So for that reason, I'm not really supportive of, uh, of this at this time. And I think if, if that was left in, or there was a more holistic view taken of it, I may change my position, but I think right now I'm gonna, I'm going to switch to a no. Sorry, I didn't mean to throw that to the last minute, but it, it's occurred to me that this isn't necessarily a, a good idea.
Would, would it be helpful if, uh, Maggie Geert is in right now, if she can, and maybe could address the Russian chef, see if there's something she can.
Yeah, that's true. I don't want to put anyone on the spot. I just, um, and I, you know, wanted to bring this up at the last meeting, but we're getting tight on time, so.
So, uh, why don't we proceed until this period is available, and then we'll come back to this item. Are there any other positions Board members wants to take or change? Right, I, um, I am going to take a position on Article forty-six, which is the Royal Entertainment for the two-fiftieth celebration. I'm going to be a no. Uh, if I would prefer us not to be inviting, uh, world leaders of any form, but, um, in particular, since this is the question before us, I, uh, I'm not interested in inviting the royal family. See if there's any others. And this period is here, perfect. Um, so Ms. Peard, there was some comments that Mr. Lucenti made about the, uh, request from D O E R to eliminate indoor cooking. And I think he was relaying concerns that were raised at the E D A C, the Economic Development Advisory Committee, about lack of consistency with regard to allowing, uh, hookups for outdoor uh, cooking on a, on a barbecue versus allowing any indoor cooking.
Yeah, I guess I would just say, um, I think there is kind of an added burden that would be bringing in from outdoor cooking and kind of like more of a cultural piece coming into it of like eliminating the needs for, um, barbecues and things like that. Whereas indoor, there are much easier substitutes, um, so easy to switch to an induction stove inside, um, not really the same, um, substitutes that you can do outside. So I think D O E R's suggestion is to bring Lexington to be consistent with what other communities are doing, um, which is an exemption or removing the exemption for indoor cooking and fire.
The, the other question that, um, has come up is, you know, if we do, if we do these changes, these are requested changes, these aren't required changes. I read the letter
Yeah.
correctly. So if we say no to this, there's no ramification definitely to the town of Lexington. This was a recommendation of D O E R. I think what the, what the committee felt is it's, again, if there's, uh, you can miss this part, so I'll repeat myself, but if we are encouraging, uh, people to not bring gas into their, um, properties or their projects, we, we've still left the gate open to say, yeah, keep, keep bringing gas hookups. Um, and so that, that's the part that didn't sit well with folks is, is, you know, we're still allowing gas hookups, basically. And if it was no outdoor cooking or no outdoor fireplaces, then there would be no need for a gas hookup. Uh, did I, is that a fair assessment?
Yeah, I think that's fair. I think under our, our bylaw, um, if it were to be amended, you would still have the potential for gas hookups for outdoor cooking.
Yeah, and there was some concern expressed about, you know, cooking indoors with gas in there, you know, there's sort of a lot of people want to do that and, and don't want to heat with gas, but they want to be able to cook with gas just because the cooking is, in some people's opinions, better.
I guess the, the one other thing I would add is that indoor, there's more of a factor for health implications of, um, having gas cooking. It's increasing asthma rates and things like that in homes where you don't have the same issues, uh, to the same extent outside.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Peard.
Yeah.
Mr. Pato, can I just follow up on your comment regarding Article forty-six?
Uh, yes, Ms. Barry.
Can I request a agenda item in the near term for this Board to have a discussion about what invitations we plan to send for the two-fiftieth?
Uh, happy to.
Yes, because you also asked for Sister City from France to come.
Yes.
And, and if the Board's not interested in that, we should really know that, so we're not.
We should know that, and we also need, then we're going to need to have a conversation on to what level of other elected officials, um, because we've been operating on a certain path with our partner communities here, and if we're not all on the same page, the sooner we can know that, the better.
I'm happy to discuss that.
Thank you.
Mr. Sandin.
So if I, if I could just make a comment or two about Mr. Lucente's concerns. Um, one of the things that I think about is that the vast majority of outdoor cooking is not done hooked up to a gas line. The vast majority of outdoor cooking is done, you know, via propane tank or something along that lines. And somebody who's bringing, doing new construction, that isn't allowed to have that, have gas inside the house, um, would have to bear the cost of running a gas hookup to the house solely for an outside cooktop. So I think it's going to be a rare, rare, um, thing that might happen, probably not very economic, much more economic just to use a portable uh, uh, tank if you're going to be cooking outside, which is what I think the vast majority of people who do with their, with their grilling. And then the other side of things, you, you mentioned ramifications, but there, there would be maybe reputational kind of thing that we're thinking about as the only community that in the fossil fuel-free, uh, bylaw that doesn't, uh, follow the same. We would be out of step with the rest of the fossil fuel-free communities.
All right, um, seeing no other comments. Uh, it does give us time to go back to our Select Board, uh, concerns and announcements. I know Ms. Hay has something. I think Mr. Sandin has something, and I have a brief comment. So start with Ms. Hay.
Actually, can you start with somebody else? I'm just pulling mine up.
So let me start with Mr. Sandin and then Ms. Barry.
Okay. So because, uh, it's town meeting season and, uh, seems like there's a lot of meetings that are occurring, um, on Tuesday night between our Monday and, and Tuesday night meetings. So, uh, the, there's a Commission on Disability meeting that I want to make a quick mention about. There's a Board of Health meeting that I'd like to make a quick mention about, and a Permanent Building Committee that I'd like to make a, a couple of quick mentions about. So at the Permanent Building Committee last night, we had an update on uh, the status of the police station, which seems to be going very well. Overall, we're on track and on schedule, uh, but at one point during the conversation, um, uh, Mr. Cronin said that they are having some challenges on the steel cost, that steel costs are much higher than they expected on the solar canopy, and that he expected to be coming back to a Select Board in a week or two to discuss the financial implications of that. So I just wanted to give you a heads up that that might be coming down the pike.
Uh, that is actually scheduled for our next meeting.
Is there a ballpark?
Let's wait until we have the, our numbers.
Yeah. Yeah. So, so yes, we have some, some things to think about. Uh, there was a, a, a very, the vast majority of the Permanent Building Committee was focused on the high school project and, uh, presenting to the Permanent Building Co- Committee thirteen different configurations of potential configurations to consider for the high school, as well as the assumptions that they are going to be using to cost these things. And, um, one of the topics at the end of the conversation was how do we make a selection of these thirteen? And so I think there's some thought that the Select Board might want to have about that, as well as the School Committee and the School Building Committee. I would guess that we may not want to make our decisions solely on the base of cost, but on terms of value, in terms of what this might might provide for our, our residents. There were many different, uh, options about field houses and, and swimming pools and performing arts centers. And one of the things we learned at the P V C last night is that the M S B A would require that, or maybe Mr. Pato may be better suited to make this particular comment about the M S B A's, um, ordering. The, uh, Commission on Disability had a meeting last night where one of the main topics of discussion was, uh, crosswalks at the Roundabout, and they reaffirmed their commitment to retaining the crosswalk. Uh, they also, uh, indicated support for Warren Article thirty-three. Uh, the Board of Health met last night, uh, and one of the topics the Board of Health was doing was considering uh, a response, uh, considering an update, uh, you, let me just frame it handsome expansion. The topic is about handsome expansion, and they were getting an update on the, uh, in, at the air quality study that the Select Board followed. And so one of the other things they're thinking about is how much time the Select Board needs to ask for in terms of an extension to the, uh, uh, draft E I R report. And Sustainable Lexington was also considering the same thing last night. What type of topics the Select Board should raise and how much time we would need to ask for in terms of, of an extension in terms of that, our response to that. So that's all I have for now.
Thank you, Mr. Sandin, Ms. Barry. And I'll ask, I'll, uh, elaborate on some of the things Mr. Sandy works, but Ms. Barry.
Thank you, Mr. Pato. Um, so I want to make the Board aware, because I don't think you've seen this yet, um, but you were alerted to it, and the community aware, that, um, PBS issued a press release yesterday regarding Ken Burns. Many of you may be familiar with Ken Burns, his work, he's a filmmaker. Um, Ken Burns has a new film coming out in twenty twenty-five titled The American Revolution. It is a six-part, twelve-hour series, um, that goes over the revolution. Um, and I'll just quote very quickly here. The series will interweave top-down accounts of American leaders and their loyalists and British counterparts with a range of perspectives from lesser-known soldiers and civilians, enslaved, free, and native who waged and witnessed the war. The American Revolution will be an expansive, unvarnished look at the virtues and contradictions of the fight for independence and the birth of the United States, and how pivotal, pivotal and groundbreaking this experiment in democracy was at the time and by extension throughout our history. And if you go on further to read the press release, you will see that Ken Burns will be coming to Boston, to Lexington, and to Concord in twenty twenty-five. And we're truly honored that he will be coming to Lexington surrounding our two-hundred-and-fiftieth events uh, to do an event here. We will have more information on tickets for that. It will be a free event, yet ticketed, um, for the community and for our partner communities, um, for that event. And we are truly grateful that he wants to come and share this with them. He doesn't do official red carpet premieres. This is as close as you get to that. He will come and do a talk and, and show some clips from this film, so we're very, very excited about that.
I'm very excited for Lexington to get the Ken Burns effect.
Right, Ms. Ms. Hay.
Thank you. So I just had to pull a few things together. So first of all, um, a couple of updates from Magic. Um, the M A P C recently launched a Language Access Resource Guide, um, which I have shared, uh, with a couple of people already, and I think it will, um, really help us as we look at, you know, sort of making all of our services accessible to, to the entire community. The other thing was that yesterday, they hosted an event called Finding the Fit: How Parking Policies Shape Our Neighborhoods and Determine Housing Outcomes. Um, uh, Ms. Page, our Assistant Planning Director, and Ms. Barrett from our Transportation Department were also, um, in, uh, in attendance. Uh, it was really a very thoughtful, very interesting event, and I wanted to mention to everyone that the author of the book, the book is um, titled Paved Paradise. Uh, and the author will also be speaking in Lexington on April twenty-fifth at six-thirty next door in the Estorcall, sponsored by the Legal Women Voters. Yesterday's focus was more, you know, sort of a panel of planners and interpreting, but it will be, you know, sort of a traditional book talk, and everybody who is interested in sort of how we do, um, evaluate the value of parking spaces versus housing, uh, should put it in your calendar. And then finally, I just wanted to give you a quick update as, um, was mentioned on Monday evening, although, um, Ms. Pato asked me to take lead on sort of Mister Pato asked me to take lead on sort of the uh H R C evaluation and and um project regarding um how we handle issues and complaints. Um as I will be stepping up on the uh Search Committee instead, um this is going to bounce back. Um but my recommendation, as I sort of outlined um the night of March sixth, is that I think actually the first stab at this process should be done by staff. Uh we have professional staff now who we did not have, um and offices that we did not have at the time that we first created the path um that exists now, so um you know, sort of the outline recommendation, which I had already gone through and, you know, vetted with the relevant staff as well as with the two current and several prior um H R C chairs would be that um there'd be sort of a general just new look at the charge of the H R C that in particular um the staff evaluate the complaint receipt process in particular, that the initial point of contact would be through our Chief Equity Officer, that a part of the evaluation would be what training would be appropriate to ensure that, you know, that office and whoever else would be relevant um would be able to handle it, that there would be essentially a triage from that office to wherever the complaint belonged. Um which could be, you know, external, like the Mass- Massachusetts Commission Against Dis- uh Discrimination, or it could be the Police Department, depending on the nature of the crime uh the complaint. Then the, you know, sort of the timeline and process would also be part of their evaluation and recommendation. And um the recommendation of the the key staff, which is essentially the staff um with whom I worked, you know, several years ago, when we put together some of the initial pieces of our um equity agenda before we had the Chief Equity Officer, which is our Deputy Town Manager, Ms. Extell, our um Chief Equity Officer, Ms. Shaw, our Library Director, uh Ms. Stembridge, and of course, our um Director of Human Services, which is now Ms. Bickelman. Um so in consultation with, as I said, the current H R C chairs and, you know, a a group of the prior chairs, as well as other people that they see appropriate, would be sort of the the expectation um to put a process together, and obviously there would, I would envision an opportunity for public input as well. So with that all said, that's what I got done between March sixth and today, and now I am bouncing it back.
You're amazing.
So you threw it back and I've caught it. Uh not the cloth, the uh the uh task, the um, right, so I will be taking the leadership role on working on that and working with the H R C and the members of the public on reviewing what the charge for the committee is beyond just how are we handling incident reports uh which is uh following a a more staff-driven direction. So I had a few updates as well, uh triggered by Mister Sandin's comments. First is uh he he mentioned that the Commission on Disability has reaffirmed their uh support for retaining the crosswalks where they are, the that item will come back to us on April first. We'll have a uh hopefully final discussion at this table on on that project. Um and that's for the whole roundabout and conditions that were raised, uh or concerns that were raised by residents. Second item is related to the the high school project. Uh Mister Sandin stole my thunder a little bit, but um the first item is April fourth will be the next public outreach, and there will be again more public announcements for it, but I wanted to make people aware that that will be the next event.
Mister Pato, is that a community name?
That is a community, correct. The the architects are at this stage working on a variety of uh refining of design, and I hesitate using the word design, they have a a number of, I think thirteen num- um different design directions. They caution that these are not designs, because what these are are massing studies that give an idea of how you would put a a building together, general shapes, general connectivity to account for the space needed and 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 how uh things would fit. But at this stage, it's not yet a design for a building. There, they have thirteen of them, and there are a variety of uh shapes and characteristics, and one of the things that I think I mentioned before is there is, we we've been discussing height and mass. Uh the the driver for looking at, there are several drivers for looking for a taller set of structures, uh but not least of which is to reduce the footprint to allow for uh more expansion and other use opportunities on the on the site. To that end, expansion, I I put on the table this past week a request for the architects to be looking at, how would they be a accommodating an increase in population of about five hundred students beyond the the targets that the M S B A has set? The M S B A requires the architects to design, here is how we will expand. But in the current massing drawings, they really hadn't provided that yet at this stage. And I said, I want to make sure that we see that early, so that we have a sense of where things are going. Because of the next item that Mister Sandin raised, which was about the request of the community for either a new or renovated field house, potentially a pool, uh potentially a performing arts center and central administration. To clarify, Mister Sandin said that there was some confusion about what could or could not be done. For the M S B A process, the M S B A does not participate in the construction of pools. So if you are adding a pool, it has to be done entirely separately from the rest of the project. Um and there is one open question as to can construction be simultaneous or proceed um the rest of the construction, because the M S B A's position is that they are participating in the creation of the educational component of the structure, and they don't want that compromised in any way by other attention. So they don't want the project derailed or otherwise deferred because of some elements that they don't see as being part of their school projects. Um that similarly relates to field houses. The M S B A does participate in renovation of existing field houses, but they do not participate in the creation of new field houses. So depending on directions that we would want to go, um it could create an ordering, a timing issue for how that work would be done. The uh central administration, they do not pay for for the space that would be needed, but they have precedence and they expect districts to uh uh often want to include space or central administration. So while they haven't yet ruled on any, we haven't proposed anything specific, the the expectation is that should we choose to put central administration in the building, it would be allowed and would be allowed as part of the construction project, it's just the the square footage for that would not be paid for. Uh the M S B A would not participate in their contribution to that cost. And then the the fourth area is around uh a um performing arts uh uh center, and there's some open questions as to the the M S B A certainly does participate in in an auditorium, uh but there were desires for an auditorium that had greater capability than what you normally would expect out of a high school, things like a pit orchestra space that's not in the standard designs, so there's some back and forth on, and we will hear more about that from the M S B A. Let's see. Uh Mister Sandy.
Um if you could just elaborate back on the field house, if we decided to build a new field house, you mentioned timing, but isn't there also some implications for going out for uh debt override as well?
Right, so that that was going to be the next topic, and this is something the board should be familiar with, but publicly not. For the question for an M S B A project, when it goes out for debt exclusion, which many people think of as a a an override, but it's it's to allow the project to be uh removed from the the uh uh tax limitations of Proposition Two and a Half. The question to for that project has to be completely standalone. It can't include anything other than the portion of the project that the M S B A has authored. So if we wanted to do a field house, if we wanted to do a pool, those questions could not be embedded inside the question for the M S B A project. They can appear on the same ballot as independent questions. Um and if we were going to be doing significant projects, uh my expectation is they would have to be excluded debt projects as well, but that is something that this board or a future board will uh will decide. Um Ms. Barry.
And just a point of clarification, and for an order to call that, it requires four out of five affirmative votes from this board, correct? Not just the normal three?
Correct, we need four, four votes of the board in favor of calling the debt exclusion question.
And we control how the question is worded? Not for M S B A?
Not for M S B A, M S B A gives us language
Yeah.
that we have to use, which is why you can't include anything else. Um the other questions are ours to create with the guidance of Town Council. The debt exclusion question itself will be, is dictated by statute, though. For in general, right? That's a verbatim.
Right, that's what we said, but then um what's the quantum of vote from this board to for the additional questions that are dead excluded? Is it four? It's a majority or supermajority?
Yeah, I I I thought that it was always four for a debt exclusion, but but we will, we will verify. Mister Macarios is trying, it's uh Town Council.
Uh I think what Mister Malloy was alluding to is all debt exclusion questions have specific language, M S B A debt exclusions have additional language. The all debt exclusion questions typically require four votes, we don't obviously want to confirm all this at the time.
Thank you, Miss Macarios.
And given everything you said, we're still planning next fall.
Uh e- currently, the timeline is published on the L H S project website
Yeah.
is for this to come to uh town meeting in the, a special town meeting in the fall of twenty twenty-five, followed by presuming that town meeting votes tos uh authorize the project, followed by a debt exclusion vote by the town in late, probably December of twenty twenty-five. It has to happen within a couple of months of the uh of town meeting voting, but it's, I think our expectation is we would be doing it in short order. Lot to be done between now and then, we have to deal with all of the Article ninety-seven land swaps, uh we have to deal with actually getting to the just narrowing down to a single design, but the question that'll go out for the M S B A is on a single project, not on a A or B or C. So um there's, we'll be, I'll have a lot of very busy people. All right, Mister Sandin. I just have a very short update, I know the board um had heard comments and feedback about a month ago from residents uh concerned about the town's involvement with the sheltered families. And Ms. Hay and I, one of the two of us has gone every single week to their meetings uh with town staff very well-run and very well-organized by the town staff um to have conversations about what supports we can give the families and what supports we can give the families, um so it's it's been a productive uh process, I just want the board to be aware that we were attending these um meetings uh on a weekly basis.
I can just add on that also, I I just want to comment as well that it's roughly a dozen of the town staff who are actively participating in this, as well as obviously the state officials, so I want give a thank you and a shout out to to that, as well as obviously the the group of residents who are volunteering their time, but it's been a a a lot of um effort on the part of many, many, from from the library to recreation to human services um to the Health Department and the Police Department.
Thank you. And we've had the luxury of time tonight, but we are about to lose that, so Mister Sandin.
And just one more update, it's my understanding that Sustainable Lexington voted unanimously to support Warren Article thirty-three last night.
But we're not getting that.
Right, very good, uh Mister Malloy, technical to the Town Manager's report.
I I can be very quick. We have um been meeting with Muzzy Condominium um Board of Trustees again, and this is one of the longstanding violations, um vote violations in the building. Uh as the board knows, we still own the former senior center, so we're own, we're one of the condominium unit owners. And uh when we met with them a couple of years ago, when we first started really pushing this issue a little bit more, this has been an issue, I looked in the files since two thousand and eleven. And um one of the things we talked about was the existence of the deep restriction on our unit and working through um trying to get that um released from the condominium trust. And so we, um I talked to Mister Pato uh when we did the agenda setting about putting in an executive session on to have that discussion about the negotiation. Um and what 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 I've done is I put it on the April eighth meeting. It's time-sensitive because they're actually hoping to move forward with construction or wording a contract in the next two months, and so it's time-sensitive but not super-time sensitive, so I put it at the end of one of these meetings, and if we have time to do it, then we can, if not, we can bump it to the following week, it's not that time-sensitive, but I do want to meet with the board and have that discussion. The other thing is um we did receive the prioritization from Tech, who is the consultant on the R F Bs along the bikeway. And that will be in my weekly update this week, and it'll be included in the next um select board meeting agenda where we have the Town Manager's up weekly update in there, and so I just want to let the board know those, both those things are out there.
Thank you, Mister Malloy. Uh so colleagues, that brings us to the end of our meeting. Our next regularly scheduled meeting of the Select Board, it will be Wednesday, March twenty-seventh at six P M via hybrid participation prior to town meeting. I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Move to second, in all favor, say aye.
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 Most say nay. Non-negotiables. Thank you.